So I'm going to start this meeting of the Environmental and Sustainability Committee of the City Council. I'm Zaida Govan, I'm the Ward Eight City Councilor. I don't see any other councilors here to recognize, but I do see Mr. Jay La Torre joining us via virtual, and I can't read that name.
Sadie.
Sadie from Rep Ash's office. Excellent. Thank you so much for being here. And of course, we have Michael here. The meeting is being recorded, so that if you did miss it, hopefully you'll catch it in another time, and it's available on Focus Springfield. And I want to thank Focus Springfield for always helping us out with this. So today, I did want to call this meeting. I know that we're working on an urban woodlands ordinance, and we're not talking about that today, but we are talking about the climate, like Clean Energy Law that is currently in the State House, correct?
No, it got signed.
Oh, it's been signed? Awesome. Hi, Chris. Chris joined us. Great. So today, I asked Michael to come here and share what this means for us, because as we know, we have some climate goals that we want to reach by 2050. And I think Massachusetts is going to be on the front lines, and I want the city of Springfield to be one of the first ones to get there. It's like a contest. Let's all get our competitive spirits up. So, Michael, if you just want, take it away, and then if we have any questions later.
That sounds great. So for those who don't know me, I'm Michael DeCara. I live in the small town of Shute'sbury, although I've worked in Springfield a bunch. I'm the Chair of the Energy and Climate Action Committee for that town, and also on the planning board. So I've been following mostly solar permitting and siting, and then the Clean Energy Law, most recently in the last eighteen months as it's developed and got through the State House. So I was going to just present on overview of the law, because there's a lot there, and it affects municipalities. So, and not sure which screen I'm going to look at. So if I'm not looking at you guys, my apologies. Let's see. So, just waiting for the screen to get shared. There it is. Cool. Okay, great. So, I'm gonna, for whatever reason, oh, let's see.
In the slideshow.
Yeah, there we go. Now I can do it. Cool. So what I'm hoping to do is just sort of go over some things in the law about local siting and permitting, concerns that I've identified, then put it in the law context for local communities, and then what I think we as municipalities can do. So that's sort of the, and I think probably like maybe twenty minutes, and then we should just chat.
Yes.
So, the bill is, was signed in December, became law. It came, it was built out of Senate 2967. It's a Nat Corating Clean Energy Grid Advancing Equity, Promoting, Protecting Rate Payers. And there's a lot to it. The siting and the permitting is only part of it. So the first thing I'll say is, one of the things that the law does, it defines what energy projects are, and there's two big categories. So there's small energy infrastructure and large infrastructure. For the things that we're talking about, it's only small clean energy, because that's within the realm of municipalities. So what the law does is it carries two categories within this small infrastructure. One is generation, and one is storage. So in generations, what's covered is any facilities under 25 megawatts that are either anaerobic digestion, solar, or wind. And I underlined anaerobic digestion, because of looking things up. I think the biomass issue falls under that, so that's relevant for Springfield. And then clean energy is usually just referred to as battery storage, and that's under 100 megawatts of storage. So those are the two things that remain within the realm of municipalities. So what, we'll get into this more later, but basically what the law does is it tags DOER as the entity that's going to create the standards, the requirements, the procedures by which siting and permitting will occur. So right now, and the motivator for this law for, I think, a lot of legislators was, it's not standardized, it's within the realm of municipalities. And the state really saw municipalities, in their opinion, I tend to disagree, but municipalities as being an obstacle to clean energy deployment. And so they wanted to sort of standardize it for 351 municipalities across the state. So the main takeaway of this slide is the DOER is the body that's going to be doing all this stuff. And then I did just copy a slide. Anaerobic digestion facilities are defined in two places in the law. And, you know, no real need to read this slide, but while there's been a lot of focus on solar and a little bit to wind, it's really interesting that all, all that's mentioned in here is that the definitions, they're identical in both places. So I think in terms of the what to do, there's a lot of fleshing out that needs to happen around, you know, biomass stuff. So the big thing, one of the big things that the law does, it requires a consolidated permit by municipalities. And so this is new, and this is different. And it's sort of based on the premise that at a municipality, you're going to have, you know, a planning process. You might have a conservation commission process. You might have a board of health process. All of them have defined procedures, and they all have their own permitting process for one project. And so where the legislature came out is that having all of these things going on their own tracks at their own paces slows deployment down. And so they wanted to consolidate it. And so what ends up happening is that every municipality is going to be required to have a composite consolidated permit. What that looks like, how it works, has not been defined. That'll be a heavy lift, in my opinion. And I think that's where municipal on-the-ground realities are really need to inform that process. You know, most of my experiences of, you know, in terms of permitting is small towns, you know, as opposed to Springfield, but it's differently complex, you know. You have staff, but there's departments and constituents and all that stuff.
Right.
So in terms of the permitting timeline, the two things that the law establishes is that, once a municipality gets an application, they have thirty days on receipt to determine that it's complete or not. And then after, once it's determined it's complete, they have an entire twelve-month process to do permitting, start to finish. So the whole idea of a consolidated permitting will take twelve months. So again, something to revisit when I get to the concerns part. The interesting thing, you know, is there's, in at least the planning circles, this idea about, a concept of constructive approval. So if a regulatory body doesn't act in the time that's required, the application is automatically approved. And so in planning circles currently, if there was an application that was put forth, and say the planning department, the planning board, or whatever the body is didn't act, what would be proposed would be proved as proposed. So not always a good thing. It's like what the developer, place developer gets. This is a little bit different in the sense that, as you'll see on the right-hand side, it says common conditions. So a municipality will have the twelve months to approve a permit. And if it doesn't do that, it's, the project is constructively approved. But what the legislature realizes is that you don't want to just have it the way the developer is pitching it. You want to actually have some standards for quality and assurances. So one of the many things DOER has to do is come up with common conditions and requirements if a project is constructively approved. So if the city, for example, gets an application, it doesn't get around to making a decision one way or the other after twelve months, these common conditions to be named later would kick into effect. And so there's another place of work to be done. I don't think this is necessarily appropriate for Springfield, but one of the things that the legislature heard back was that not all municipalities have the capacity to review these infrastructure projects, whether they pay the anaerobic digestion, the solar, the wind. And so if after six, sixty days of receipt of an application, a municipality could say, hey, we can't do this, and give it to the state, and the state will take it on and do the whole process. So it's a backup, mostly, I think, for smaller municipalities. As an example, in my town of Shute'sbury, which has a population of 1,700, we're looking at potentially five industrial-scale solar projects at the same time. So that, I think we can handle it, but that's, that's almost a lot. One of the cool things that the legislature put in here is the idea of a mitigation hierarchy. So try to avoid any negative impacts, kind of what it minimizes, and then if you can't minimize, mitigate. And this is a national and international concept that gets put in place. And so this got built in. Again, this is going to be something that DOER has to identify in terms of what does that really look like on the ground, and what's the procedures for working through this. I think this is of particular importance for Springfield. There is an environmental justice focus woven into the law. And so a few things that it does, it establishes this office for environmental justice at EEA. It's requiring the implementation of EJ principles. And then next slide, I'll get into cumulative impact. But the idea is for environmental justice communities not to have the burden overwhelmingly placed on them. So that's a really important, fundamental approach. And then the idea of a cumulative impact, what the legislature got, which is great, is that no one population group or geographic area should be overly impacted by the siting of clean energy deployment. You know, so there's towns in southeastern Mass and in central Mass where they've got, you know, small towns, seventeen solar sites. Or you wouldn't want to put, you know, I remember listening to a webinar, and folks from New Bedford and Fall River were saying, when wind energy from our shore comes in, it's got to go somewhere on shore. You don't want to put it in the EJ communities where all the other stuff has already been for decades. So this is, again, something that DOER is going to have to figure out. What does that look like? But it's a really important concept of putting forth, you know, that it should, the burden should be spread. And then I think the, there's one of the last two things that I was going to identify at the front end, is there's a requirement for a dashboard for data regarding projects. And I'll get to the sort of my concerns, but right now, it requires an aggregate of the number of applications filed, the decisions, and pending information. And the intention is to facilitate public understanding, which is, you know, and then the long-term trends and outcomes. So those are good. There's room for improvement. And then the other thing in this last paragraph is convening a stakeholder process to develop and inform the design. So yet again, that's part of the to-do list. And then the last thing, which I think Zaida might come to the solar stuff that you were talking about. This has definitely been true for the smaller towns that, and this is like a two-second history lesson, but in 1985, there was a law passed that became part of the zoning law. It's basically called the solar exemption. Some people call it the Dover Amendment, because it's part of the exceptions. So municipalities can't regulate religious siting or educational siting. And so the ninth paragraph deals with solar. And in recent years, you know, so the original intent was, in 1985, there wasn't photovoltaics. There was only hot water, solar. And so I think the idea was, the state didn't want to have people in certain communities saying, oh, my neighbor has hot water, solar on their roof, and I think it's ugly, so we won't do it. Times have changed. That was forty years ago. But it's being used now by solar developers to basically tell municipalities, you can't regulate where we put stuff. And I'll just say, like, our town's getting sued for our solar bylaw. So it's been really at the front edge. What the law does here is basically says, DOER is going to create standards and guidelines. And if a municipality buys into those standards and follows the rules that's set out for DOER, they will be deemed to be in compliance with the solar exemption. So, you know, whatever DOER says, then you're allowed to regulate within those lines. So that's, it would have been better, in my opinion, if they struck it. That would have been the better way, but they didn't want to do that, because they thought municipalities were just getting away. So the things that I, I've identified, a few shortcomings, which I think are worth noting. So the first one is constructive approval deadlines. They're too firm and they're too short. So if you have a complicated project, and a municipality is trying to do due diligence, whether it's community engagement or hiring consultants to do some further research, twelve months is not necessarily a long time, although objectively speaking, one could say it is. So it's too short. The other part is that both parties, both the regulating body and the applicant, could decide they want to extend it beyond twelve months, but there's no language in there saying that you can. So that would mean that twelve months hits, and then you're into constructive approval. So that's, that's a problem. The other part, and I think Senator Barrett, who was the co-chair of Telecommunications, Utilities, and Energy, which sort of pushed this through. And I was on one Zoom meeting where I think he acknowledged that there was the risk of constructive approval, and so they wanted to monitor it. And so they put in a process whereby DOER would look at all the applications from the state, you know, that came through the state, and say, how many of those got constructively approved? Because you would want to know. Maybe twelve months is too short. The problem is that, in my opinion, the process that they set out is not really responsive. So DOER is supposed to review these things every quarter, and you're supposed to look to see if more than 50% of the projects were constructively approved, but over a twenty-four-month period. So it's going to take two full years before anything happens. And then if DOER says, hey, more than 50% have been constructively approved in that two-year period, they then have six months to analyze and then report out a recommendation. So it's two and a half years before recommendations are made. You know, so it is, if twelve months is too short, it's going to be a while before anything can get changed. So that's sort of a problem. In terms of the common conditions, if there's constructive approval, this is a biggie, you know. So if we assume that there will be constructive approval, because twelve months is too short, what are those common conditions? You know, are they protective? Are they appropriate? Do they work for municipalities? Because these will be the rules of the road if a municipality can't make a timely decision, quote-unquote, timely decision. So that's, you know, they're not defined. DOER has to work on it. But I think that's another place where we can sort of share local wisdoms and concerns. This other, the next two slides, I, it's, this might be seen as standard, but it really is concerning. So what, two things about de novo review. So de novo review, which I was not aware of until, you know, this all started, it basically looking, looks at, means looking at cases new, as if they've never been reviewed before. So all the data, all the time, all the analysis, all the thoughtfulness that went into it, you don't count that. So thirty days after a decision is made by a municipality, an individual, an applicant, can ask for a de novo review at state level. So that would mean, like Springfield could go through a whole process, they could come up in eleven months, make a decision, informed by constituents, informed by experts, et cetera. If the applicant didn't like it, they could basically say, we're appealing it to the state. And the state could take none of that information that you guys developed in eleven and a half months of review, when they're considering it. So that seems like it's just, you're losing value. So the two things that I, there's a few things I have an issue with. I mean, one, it's not using the information that's gathered locally, really important. It's probably going to be more expensive, because they're redoing the whole thing over again. And, you know, it's a slap in the face to local officials, many of whom are volunteers and putting in lots of hours. And then ultimately, it's only made, the appeal decision's only made by one person at the energy facility siting board. So you go from what's more a democratic process with lots of input to one person making a decision based on very, you know, non-local gathered information. So that's, that's just problematic. The data dashboard that I mentioned before, it requires aggregate data. So it doesn't require individual projects. And that's what people in regulating bodies would want to know. Like, whether it's our, you know, our project in front of us or one in the neighboring community, we sort of want to be able to look at that stuff. So that needs to get fleshed out. The mitigation hierarchy, which is great in terms of the avoid, minimize, and mitigate, there's a very real possibility that a developer could say, we can't avoid or minimize because of the financial requirements of doing that. And so the rumor hits the road to say, what are the reasons whereby you're allowed, as an applicant, not to avoid doing negative stuff or minimizing it? So it's another place where, can we just take the financial reasons off the table? You know, maybe there's a logistical reason that was legit, or a design reason. But so that's something to look at. So in terms of, so those are sort of the concerns. And then to stepping back in terms of how things are going to play out, the law goes into effect March 1st, 2026. So we have, this slide is smidgenate. So it's, we got now fourteen months where the status quo is in existence. And then after March 1st, it changes. So the big question, I think, that everyone's sort of asking is, do municipalities retain or lose their ability to permit locally? And the answer is yes and no. So municipalities will retain the right to do permit review under the clean energy, for clean energy facilities. So if it's generation under 25 megawatts or storage under 100 megawatts, municipalities will still have the ability to review and regulate. And if there's bylaws or ordinances that are locally in place that don't get invalidated by the DOER guidelines, they would stay in place. Where municipalities lose the control is permitting has to comply with the DOER standards. So if there's something that Springfield wanted to do, or does do now, and it differs, you have to go along with DOER. And then the appeal process, in effect, is if the applicant does not like the decision, they can appeal to the state for the de novo. So in effect, you're losing some control. I mean, you still have, I think even now, there's an appeal process, but this one is articulated, and really, I think it changes the field where one person is making a de novo. So I was thinking about Springfield, and just to sort of make it real, in terms of solar siting, I know there's been discussion about the Allen Park Road project. There's the biomass at East Springfield, which as far as I know, was considered dead, but maybe it's not going to be dead anymore.
It's a zombie.
And then the other thing, although not technically in Springfield, it's worth knowing that there's discussion of energy storage in West Springfield along the river. And given, you know, in my opinion, I think others, lithium-ion battery storage, although batteries are a good idea, lithium-ion storage is a technology that's not ready for prime time because of fires, especially along a river. Like, there was a fire, I think it was about a month ago, in an industrial location in California. So it was contained on the ground. They let the fire burn. But for the surrounding community, there was toxic fumes that burned for several days. So, you know, being across the river does not really help Springfield very much. And if it went into the Connecticut, because, you know, there, the only, the thing with lithium-ion batteries, you can't put the fires out. But the best practice is to put water on to contain the heat. So the third, it's called thermal runaway, where one battery heats up and catches fire, and then heats up and catches on fire for the next one. So if you put water on these things, and there's toxic chemicals involved, you know, they could lead you to the river. So problematic. So those are just sort of like real-life examples in Springfield. So I got three last slides, which are really the sort of the next steps, and they're all involved, like, so what are we on the ground in municipalities doing? The first one is to really make sure that the DOER standards work well. You know, that they're addressing public health, safety, the environment, and other relevant criteria. That there's going to be a common application for all clean energy projects. So that application works logistically. For municipalities, it's also capturing the information that a municipality would want, need. There's a, that they're uniform prefiling requirements. So the laws talks about prefiling requirements. But, you know, that they're good for public meetings, committee outreach. Like, one of the things that is in there is that public meetings have to be within proximity of the municipality where the application is happening. So, you know, if there was an application, you wouldn't have to show up into Boston and figure out how to get residents on a bus to do that. So that's good. But reinforcing that, making sure it's real, and then having sites suitability standards, so that things are sited in the right places and the right ways. The next thing, which are about the smart regs, which are not directly related to the law, but DOER is coming up with. So smart regulations are the state subsidies for solar. So right now, we're in version smart 2.0. And the DOER is coming up, they're in the middle of the process of smart three. The draft reg should be out this spring. I was told like April, May, and then it takes about eight-plus months to finalize. So probably by the end of this fiscal year, they'll be out. These tie directly to the regulations for siting and permitting, and that they should really be reflecting the same thing, that the state should not be giving subsidies to projects that don't comply with the regulations that they're doing. So tracking that and having input, there will be a public comment period after the draft regs are out. But the things that I have identified is, it should support a new mitigation framework that DOER put out in terms of siting, you know, trying to do it on disturbed land, rooftops, canopies. There should be meaningful performance standards. There's none currently in the 2.0. That there's explicit safety and health protections and consumer protections. There's none now. Meaningful transparency in projects like the website data. And then there's meaningful early community engagement. So before, you know, an applicant come in and say, we're going to do this, and then we're going to talk to the community. They really should be on the front end and say, no, we're thinking about doing this. Where should it be? What should it look like, et cetera, et cetera. So that's coming soon. And then the last part, especially since Rep Ash's office is here, I'll say, I, my sense is that there's probably little appetite in the legislature to make any changes to the law until it goes into effect on March 1st, 2026. And they definitely have demonstrated over time that, looking at the solar exemption, there's no interest in that. But I think we all have to do it at the municipal level, and the community level is educate legislators so they can advocate for DOER, both on the smart regs and the standards in clean energy. And the more that they're sort of reminding DOER that municipalities are the front lines of stuff. And they're going to be doing the lifting in terms of the regulating and the siting permitting, and that's where the projects are going to live ultimately. Like, that's really important. And that is the end of my things. I'll stop sharing, and we can talk if there's questions.
Thank you so much. We've been joined by Councilor Davila. It went Kathy Ratte from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. I just mentioned your name, Kathy. All right, great. Does anyone have any comments, any questions? I know Chris might have some questions or comments.
And I'm here too, Councilor Govan.
Oh, hi, Miss Otto. This is.
Hi. I don't know why he keeps doing this to me, but it's me.
All right, go ahead. Go ahead, Chris, and I'll let the councilor speak in a minute. I'm sorry.
Sure, there's just a few questions slash comments that I have from a DPW city position. Regulations have tried to have been done in the past about, I gotta use the word sunset again, that, you know, a municipality or an entity only has X amount of time to review and approve a plan before it reverts back. I want to make sure that in the, and I have no problem talking with the legislators about this, that that timeline does not include review periods by the owner. Where I've run into this in the past, for example, is that we review a project, we provide the owner with a million comments. They sit on it for six months and then just say, well, twelve months is up now. We're going to enact it the way we do. So we have to make sure that that gets taken care of. The other issue in the city, we probably have four to six locations throughout the city where there are solar developments that are all done by Eversource. And those, they go through a complete process prior to even coming to the city to do that. So I'm kind of interested to know how that's going to operate. Some of them are on private property, not owned by Eversource. So for example, I could own ten acres. I could lease it to Eversource, and this project may get kind of, I don't want to say, the process doesn't become the same, but it doesn't, because they go through a process at the state level before it even comes to us, as they are doing now for all of their electric gas expansion, electric expansion, that before it even comes to the city, they have to go through. That before it even comes to the city, they have to go through um. Review processes with the citing committee and and the Department of Public Utilities. Uh, because what they do impacts rate paying, so therefore they have to go through that process separately. So I I would see, I, and so that kind of creates a little bit of confusion. As to uh the process, for example, if I owned a parcel, wanted to lease it to ever source. And I'm going to get a bunch of money from ever source where versus doing it myself as a developer. I probably make more money, but I'm going to get it approved possibly quicker. So there's a lot of uh things that always get buried in this legislation that sounds great. Uh, until it needs to be enacted. So you, one of the problems that we we, uh, it was before my time, but I know what ran into on the biomass was. Things sat at the developer side for six to eight months.
Right.
And then it would come back to the city for review and now all of a sudden you're under a legislative timeline to make sure you get your review done. Uh, you know, so, because we're dealing with, you know, from a D P W perspective, you're dealing with, you know, drainage, traffic access. Uh, you know, land impact, topography, all those wonderful things. And we want to make sure that, you know, we're able to review all of those things ahead of time. One of the things that we do on most developments here is when we hear about it was we try to deflect them early on to the neighborhood groups. And that's, it's not a requirement and a project can't be denied because of that. So I think when we get into these projects that are going to be very, very, very tricky. Um, you're going to be dealing with entities that probably have a very, very big pocketbook. Uh, and uh, a lot of money, you know, to be able to do what they want to do with regard to attorneys and and engineers. So these rules, um, and then we also have to make sure that the rules that are putting in place. Are not a conflict to anything that we may have in zoning regulations or processes in the city. Uh, just to make sure that if something were to go to. You know, if a si- if a special permit was required for something and it ends up at the city council and they denied it. Or D P W denied it or planning denied it, you know, are we opening ourselves up to a uh? Uh, you know, to liability. So those are the things that are always, when the state does these rules and regs, we always have to make sure. Uh, you know, while it sounds good sometimes on the surface, the devil is always in the details.
And so, Chris, if I can jump in about, I think a bunch of those things, because you hit a lot of things. I think the big thing is the whole intention of this legislation from the legislator was legislature was actually changed the way it looks on the ground. So like your last example about, you know, D P W approving something in the city council. This whole idea of a consolidated process, project and permit is that. All the stakeholders at the municipal level have to somehow figure out how to coordinate. So that there's only one permit that's acceptable coming out of the city of Springfield. And so like that's one of the challenges and which is why I think the work on common conditions is really important. Because, you know, core, as you're saying, there's complex issues that have to get looked at. Um, so like their whole intent is to simplify at the, what they see is a confusing and hold up. But it, I think it complicates stuff at the local level. Um, in terms of the the two examples you gave. The stuff that's going through the E F S B, the Energy Facility Siting Board now, because of the nature of what they are. That was really the first one or two slides I'd offer where they differentiated between the small energy project and the large energy projects. So, you know, the gas transmission lines, that kind of stuff is going to continue to go to the Energy Facility Siting Board. Because, but I think I I didn't focus that so much, eh, not at all in this, but in my looking. That's also supposed to be expedited, because um I think the legislature felt like they were too slow. And then on the small example, um, at least in many of the municipalities throughout the Commonwealth. The scenario that you outlined where there's a private landowner who's leasing land to the, you know, utility or developer is the norm. And so it doesn't matter who owns the land, that if there's going to be a small energy generation project. So in this case, say solar, um, that whoever's owning it and whoever is leasing it, at some point, they're going to have to put in an application. The joint application is going to be designed by D O E R. So the city won't have the ability to say, this is what we want, D O E R is going to say, this is what we want. And once that gets submitted, that's when that clock starts going. The one thing I had to check, because I, your point about the applicant going back and, you know, trying to answer the questions of the regulatory regulators. That's come up, I know I've read it, but I. It's a really important point, because it delays the timing. And if it takes them six months to answer your questions, then all of a sudden you're looking at twelve month deadline, that's problematic. So I'd have to go back, I can get back to Zeta about which one it is, but I think that's really important. But even if they weren't, you know, delaying and they were trying to just do it in a normal course of business. The complexity of things could take twelve months easily. Um, and the fact that there's no mechanism for extending it by mutual agreement is seems like an oversight.
Yeah.
And the the other thing, back to the to the question about the processes and the one, uh, you know, I'm going to say one application, one response. That in a lot of cases could be in direct conflict with our charter in some areas. So that, you know, that's something from a, you know, a legal perspective, uh, you know, whether it's Steve Bonacanti or it ends up being Ken Shea. You know, somebody's going to have to look at that, because in a lot of cases right now, planning reviews it. They give it, I'm going to say tacit approval, then it's like, hey, now you submit it to the D P W. Or it goes to the city or the city council first, then it comes to the D P W. So, um, you know, the way some of those things are now, the processes that we, that we have. We're going to have to make sure that it is not in conflict. You know, that, you know, and the reason why I say this is a lot of these bigger projects are well financed. So they're going to spend a lot of time finding every, you know, open, open space that they can within the law to get their project approved. Uh, and, you know, we're just pushing things through a municipality. So, you know, we would, we're going to have to double check on the charter side to make sure. Uh, you know, we have the proper layout, because right now, you know, there could be four or five, six different departments involved. And, uh, you know, somebody's going to have to be the master of herding all those cats.
Yeah, and 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 that's the reason that, you know, I wanted to have this meeting, Chris. Because these are the kind of things that we should be talking about and asking about now. So that we can talk to legislators and have them make the necessary changes before March twenty twenty six. Um, this time I do want to give um the counselors uh an opportunity to share, Ms. uh, Council Whitfield.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I I was late, but what, what are we talking about here?
The clean energy law that just passed. Yeah.
Okay, all right, I will, are we going to get the um slides?
You have the slides, yeah, they were mailed out.
Okay, so I'll go back and um review those.
Okay, and um Michael DeCara is the one who um presented and he's very um. Open and able to answer our questions if we need it, okay?
All right, so I'll be, I'll be emailing Michael.
Council Whitfield, um, Council Davila, did you have anything? Maybe not, all right.
Oh, thank you, my friend, no other have any questions.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, so does anyone else have any questions or any concerns? I know Rep Ash's office is going to be helping us out. Go ahead, Michael, did you want to share? No, that's Rep Ash's office.
Hi there, my name is Sadie, I'm from Representative Ash's office, I actually sit at the State House. Um, and I work with him on budget and legislation, so this was extremely helpful to hear your concerns. Um, and definitely something that I'm going to be sharing and bringing to him um with all this information, so I just want to say thank you, this was extremely educational.
Thank you, thank you so much.
I do have one question, um, Counselor, and I might have missed it in the presentation, but is this something that um local communities have to opt into? Or it's the state law and it's just coming, it's just coming?
Go ahead, um, Michael can answer that.
It's just coming. So I think, you know, sort of picking up on what the councilwoman was talking to Chris about, you know. Between now and March first of next year, two thousand twenty six, is a time for municipalities to really share with D O E R. This is how it works on the ground, you know, so Chris, to your point about, you know, changing the procedures might conflict with the city charter. Like, that's something that really needs to be considered, you know, the thing I would add as well is that. Um, like in my town, I was talking to the the Chair of the Conservation Commission, you know, and so Conservation Commissions. They by statute, they've got procedures that they have to follow, just like planning boards have to have procedures that they have to follow. And so there might be timelines or reports that don't necessarily jive with each other. Um, or could be in conflict, and so the idea of having a consolidated municipal permit. Sounds nice, but when you pull back the sheets and you say, which bodies have to do what things by what time? Um, and they've never had to coordinate, you know, so for example. A concom and a planning board will probably have to have public hearings. You know, you can have separate public hearings, you can have joint public hearings, then you get into open meeting law issues. Um, so it quickly gets complex. Um, and then you get to the point of, oh, if we're doing this the way you, you know, the state wants us to do it, will we hit that twelve month mark in enough time? Um, so it's not that this is not a, a good goal, but the complexities on the ground, I don't think are fully realized yet. And D O E R needs to understand what municipalities are looking at, whether it's a big city or a small town.
Right, so.
Can you just reiterate for me the twelve month rule?
Sure, so basically if an applicant says that they want to submit, um, they want to develop, say. A wind facility, a solar facility, or, you know, a biomass facility, they put in the application. The city would have thirty days to basically say, this application is complete. And then from the date of application, the city has twelve months to make a decision of, yes, we approve it or no, we don't approve it. You know, one other little interesting thing is it's conceivable that, say, the planning, you know. Department for Springfield would say, yes, we approve it. And, you know, T P W would say, we got problems with it, we're not ready to approve it. You know, so you can have different bodies within a municipality, so the net result would be that. And the consolidated permit, it came out as a denial, but different bodies and so. Resolving that.
Yeah, and then talk about the um, at the twelve months, if the city doesn't decide. It'll automatically get approved at the state level.
Right.
Which is a problem, what Chris said, sometimes the city might ask the developer for some added information. And they might sit on that request for six months. And by the time the twelve month comes, they'll just get the approval automatically, which is an issue. So I would encourage everyone to email um D O E R. The email is in the um slides and I'll say it right here, D O E R dot energy at mass dot gov. To, you know, express our concerns, talk to our legislators and make sure that, you know, this is great, I think, because we do want clean energy. But we also want to make sure that it's done responsibly and that the municipalities are able to go have, you know, go through the process that we have to go through.
Yeah, I'll just give one example, I think, building on what Chris has talked about, you know, for the, for the common conditions. So if there's, if a project is constructively approved, meaning the city of Springfield doesn't act on it one way or the other after the twelve months. There's these common conditions, so the the project will get approved with X, Y and Z in place. I can imagine that D O E R basically has something, you know, more value statements than metrics. Because the metrics might differ from, you know, Ohio to Springfield to Westfield to, you know, Tallent. Um, but it could be, for example, that in terms of traffic, it works for the community. Or in terms of, you know, protection of water, you know, so there should be things that are articulated that are just built in, which would be. Normal things a municipality would want to be protecting for public health, welfare and safety or quality of life. Um, you know, you know, so you don't want to create, you know, and there's that whole idea of the cumulative impact. So if you're developing something in a neighborhood, you know, you don't want to have excessive traffic with big trucks coming down residential streets. For example, you know, so you'd want to have the common conditions built in there from a protective place. So that you, you know, the whole idea is to get good siding, because I think, as the councilwoman said, we all want clean energy and we all know we need it now. It's just about doing it smart.
Mm hmm, exactly.
And are these for like solar farms and wind farms, is that what we're talking about, like what?
Yeah, anything that um will develop clean energy, so solar, wind.
Four categories.
Four categories, say what they are.
To generate energy, so it'd be solar, it'd be wind, and then it's anaerobic digestion, which is, you know, biomass. And those are under twenty five megawatt generation. And then there's storage, um, which is basically battery storage, um, and that would be under a hundred megawatts. So those are the fourth thing categories, the generation and the and the storage.
I'm so sorry I was late, I had another meeting, but I got one more question.
You could, you could watch the video and then um ask questions.
Okay, I got one, I got one more. Do these um. Locations have to be in a specific zoning area?
No, no, in fact, that's one of the the issues, so. One of the slides talked in particular about like solar siting, where currently up until March first two thousand twenty six. Municipalities are really pretty limited in terms of where projects can go. And what's interesting, just as an aside, is that with the Attorney General decided about a year and a half ago was that. There's the solar exemption limiting regulation, but for energy storage for batteries. And the Attorney General decided that batteries are covered as under the solar exemption. Even though batteries don't generate electricity and even though batteries are not solar, they're covered. So what that effectively means is that if the city of Springfield said, we, between now and March first two thousand twenty six. We only want to place battery and solar facilities in a certain way. A developer could could object to that, it depends on how it's written, but there's definitely the chance that it could be objected to. And municipalities across the state have been sued in that regard, so. Part of the the whole challenge, you know, of taking the next year to talk to D O E R is to make sure that. Since municipalities can't say that, um, how does the U R, through this law, they have the ability to say. If municipalities do it this way, they can determine where things are going to go. And so part of that conversation is where should things go in order to sort of do, do, generate clean energy and not have negative impacts on the community?
Right, but you know, and uh Springfield is an environmental justice committee, I mean, community. And we don't, you know, we don't want to be um overburdened with these facilities, right? Because they could go all over the the state, um, but a lot of times what happens is that they take advantage of our. You know, um, our poverty actually in our city and they put more of these in our um, our cities and and we are overburdened by them. So, and I see Council Allen has also joined us, anything else, Council Whitfield?
No, that's it, thank you, Counselor.
No problem, thank you so much. Is there anything else? Thank you, Jay Latori for joining us. No, uh, Council Allen, he's walking up the stairs, he's coming over here. All right, um, all right, anything else, any last?
No, I think I'm, but I I guess I would just say, you know, if you guys have questions.
Absolutely, I hope you don't mind, we're going to be reaching out to you if we have questions. And I would encourage again everyone to reach out to D O E R and let them know, you know, what our thoughts are, what our concerns are. Um, and also talk to our legislators, we could talk to our state reps, our senators. Um, to make sure that they know where we stand and where we want to go, right?
And I think you have a copy of the bill that I sent you, it's it's long, it's like three hundred pages, I think, but.
Yeah, I have it on email, if anybody wants to see it.
Is there like a snippet section, is there like a?
All right.
Cliff note version?
Yeah, right, just call Michael.
Yes, Cliff note, exactly.
All right, well, listen, thank you all so much for being here, let me see who said something on the chat. That's Rep's uh, um, Rep Ash's office, thank you, oh Kathy, go ahead.
I just wanted to say that this law is designed to improve environmental justice and equity, so there. Um, I know there are some concerns, but I would also be happy to um share uh a different perspective on this law. With the, with the council and with the Sustainability Committee, that um. The regional planning agencies were represented on the working group that developed these, this new law. And um, we're pretty excited about it, and I I think the concerns that. Michael DeCiar is bringing are very important and, you know, it's important to work with your legislators to make sure that it works. But it is um, it is designed to address some of your concerns, Council of On, with respect to improving. Environmental justice and equity, so um, there are, there are some other benefits to the law in addition.
And Captain, I agree, I mean, having the E J office and then the cumulative impact, are you? And Catherine, I agree. I mean, having the E J office and then the cumulative impact are huge concepts to put in here. So, I mean, without a doubt. I think it's, there's just on the municipal level, some of the thinking through the procedures, you know, it's just, if those work, then it'll work. And if it doesn't work, it's going to be problematic.
Right. And that's why, and I, I agree, Kathy, I'm so, that I was so excited when I heard about this. And I think when I scheduled the meeting, it hadn't passed yet. That's why I wanted Michael to come on so we could advocate for it. Because it is something that's very important that we need in our city, in our state, in our country, actually. But again, we want to make sure that those concerns are heard by D U R and that the, especially that timeline is a little concerning to me because Chris brought us some really great points about, you know, especially some developers might not respond on time. And then by the time passes, we might have another solar farm next to another solar farm. Array, I should call it. I'm sorry. But thank you, Kathy. And if you want at another meeting, you can, you can come and talk about this some more, so that we can learn more about it. Because I, I, I think that we should always be learning more about what we need.
Thank you very much.
No problem. Thank you so much. All right. Well, if there's nothing else, you know, I could give you your time, some time back, ten minutes back. All right. You all have a good afternoon. Thank you so much.